Good evening, good afternoon. Welcome to our first work session of 2023. Glad to see everybody back. We have our esteemed board members standing in front of us. We're gonna have a brief swearing in ceremony. Want to congratulate and welcome back Mr. Mark Cantrell, Ms. Kia Chambers, Ms. Naomi Buckner, Ms. Nikki Tillery, and welcome to Ms. Margot Sly. And then we have our esteemed Judge Antonio, who will administer the oath. And he's got his Georgia hint, hint. The Georgia hat is on, so we will have a very expeditious meeting.
As always, I'm pleased and honored to be part of this ceremony. I want to congratulate you all. Without further ado, let me have you all raise your right hands.
Okay, hold on, I'm trying.
Okay. I can speak very loudly, so I'm sure folks can hear me anyway.
We were working for TV land.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me have you all again, raise your right hands. Do you state your names?
I am Keanu Booker.
A citizen of Muskogee County and being an employee of Muskogee County School District and recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia. Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Muskogee County to the best of your ability? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you are not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you are not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you are otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that of Georgia, and that you have met the residency requirement of this office?
I am, I do, I will.
Congratulations. If I didn't like you all, that's what we would do. One word at a time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Judge D. Antonio. Thank you to our board attorney, Mr. Greg Ellington, for making all of the arrangements. Thank you so very much. And congratulations again to our board members who are returning and welcome again to Ms. Margot Sly on her new endeavor. Now, the family members, if you would please stand and wave so we can recognize you as well. Thank you so much. Thank you so much because it does take all of us, all of you, the whole family is involved in this public service work, so thank you so much for your support.
We were just gonna wave to, hey, Mark.
Hey. We were naked at the state park we did a month ago. When I saw Travis, I didn't see him.
That was some inside canter there. We've changed seats. Those who attend regularly will notice that we have moved around, but listen, huddle in, team, huddle, 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 all right? We have been studying these plays on this agenda items for the last five days. We have studied the plays, we have watched a lot of film, right? So we are ready to go for the win, all right? So we're gonna start this meeting on hut one. And then we're gonna go for the win, all right? We're gonna go cheer on the home team.
You gotta make sure Bill Toppes wants you to cheer.
Read between the lines. I do want to welcome any administrator or building leaders who are here, if you would raise your hands. Thank you so much for all that you do to support our students and our parents. Hope everyone had a fantastic break, and now we're off to do all this amazing work. So we will start out with our public agenda. And we do have one request. Ms. Sadi Abdullah is not here, but I will take this opportunity to read our policy. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal. I just made that go away. Or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow normal channels to address such problems, which would be contacting superintendent's office through Ms. Karen Jones. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation. There's an update on programs for exceptional students. Previously, or in the past, board members, we've received their information in chunks, but the administration has heard the request that you want the whole thing dumped on you at once, so please take copious notes. And we are ready for the presentation.
Good afternoon. Dr. Lewis, board chair, Ms. Pat Hughley-Green, and board members. My name is Dr. Sin Crystal Poitras, and I'm the Executive Director for Programs for Exceptional Students, and it is a privilege to be able to update each of you all today on our program as we continue to seek, serve, and support the students and parents of Muskogee County. I've heard your call. We'll try to be as brief and as thorough as possible.
That doesn't apply to you. We want all the information.
I thought I'd try.
Yeah, I know you were trying.
All right, so I'm gonna get started, and I want to just share with you guys that each year, the State Department of Education puts out an annual report for the special education departments in all districts, and I am so proud to share that the Muskogee County School District exceeded expectations in six of the areas and met expectations in five of those areas. And I won't read to you each part of this, but in search areas such as early childhoods, transition, post-school outcomes, we were really just knocking it out of the ballpark. So I am very excited to be able to share that information with you, but also want to be able to share with you that we use this information to be able to provide supports to our students, to our teachers, and our administrators in our district, because each year we want to see a gain and an improvement in these particular areas. And with that being said, one of the things that we know is important is not overloading our teachers. And so when we look at those types of things, we want to make sure that we have caseloads that are manageable by the teachers, and so that they can provide the supports that are necessary for our students. When we look at the students in Muskogee County, we have over 5,000 students that we serve that have been identified as having a disability. And as you can see on our slide, the disability category that serves the most is specific learning disability, and if you do the math, it's about 28, 29% of our students who are identified in that area. When we look at other health impairments, that's our second largest area that we support in our district, and that's about 21% of our students. So we have, we serve all 13 categories in our district, and what I can say about the Muskogee County School District, about our district, is that we do an outstanding job providing a continuum of service for our students that ranges from the least restrictive environment of interrelated to the most restrictive environment of a specialized program. And in Muskogee County, we have three specialized programs. The first one would be our behavior support program. The second would be our autism support program, and the third would be our specialized adaptive curriculum program. And when we look at these particular areas, the interrelated programs, which is our least restrictive program, is provided in all of our schools. And then, as a district, we cluster our programs for our specialized programs. So not every school has a specialized program, but as you can see on this slide, we have specialized programs for autism, behavior support, and specialized adaptive curriculum in various areas in our district. And you'll also notice that there is a transition program as well that helps our students after they leave school. So with that being said, I am going to invite my program managers for interrelated to come up and share some more in-depth information with you guys. I'm gonna ask Ms. Mary Gottfried and Dr. Sharon Kelly to come to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Mary Gottfried. I'm the central region program manager, as well as program manager over our deaf, hard-of-hearing program.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Sharon Kelly, and I'm the program manager for the east region, and I also serve for the monetary data that goes in for FTE and also student records.
So our interrelated services is our largest program across the district. We do serve almost all of the eligibilities. We have consultative services, collaborative services, co-taught services, as well as small group services. So we are working to give our students access to the general education curriculum through a modality of ways. So we're looking at multi-layers of support across the district.
As we serve our students, one of the main goals in a least restrictive environment is also looking at post-secondary outcomes. So a lot of times, oftentimes, teachers don't realize that at the primary years, they don't really see it, but at the end, it is. So we try to celebrate all the way through, encouraging those to know that everybody is valued in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next program we'll have for our specialized programs, Ms. Jocelyn Powers for our autism program.
Thank you. I am Jocelyn Powers Corcoran. I am our program manager over the autism supports program and the lead BCBA over autism. And so our autism program is in collaboration through a contract with the Marcus Autism Center out of Atlanta. We have had that contract and that collaborative agreement with them beginning from 2010 until now, so a long-running collaboration with them, and we thank you for your support on that piece. Our autism program, as you have heard from interrelated and will hear from our other program managers, operates along that same continuum. We want to make sure that we're serving students, not only students with an eligibility of autism, although many of them do, we're looking at the deficits associated with that. And so we have interrelated supports, we have blended classrooms, which we're always trying to make that step into our next less restrictive environment and kind of push them towards interrelated if that's a possibility. And then what we're most known for and talked about are those SPOLOST wing supports that we have as well, and those are for our students that are in that self-contained pullout and have the most needs. We serve students within the autism program from the ages of three all the way through 22 when they exit us. Our programs are based on applied behavior analysis, teaching strategies, and methodologies, and our focus is taking something that is typically thought of as a clinic-based service and pushing that into the education setting and preparing our teachers and our parents and all of our support staff and our administrators to feel confident with that and to offer a service that, you know, quite frankly, we are one of the only school districts in Georgia, and that pushes that into the extent that we do. So again, we have those separate class pullout options for our most significant students. Those are students that also have a significant cognitive disability and significant behaviors. We offer full-day inclusion, co-teaching, again, those ABA-based strategies pushed into that co-teaching model and extra support. We do have a full-day preschool also for those students that serves our three- to five-year-olds. We also have a transition program for those students that are 12-plus, that's it, at Jordan. One of the things we are most proud of right now, we've gotten a lot of feedback about, is a peer social skills training class. Shaw was gracious enough to let us host that our first year, and this past year, we've used Jordan. Parents participate in that as well as our students. It's about six to eight weeks. We have a little celebration at the end of that at the time when they graduate, so if you haven't gotten an invite for that, we'd love to have you come when they graduate. It's a big deal. And so we also have board-certified behavior analysts, BCBA's, which is what I am, that can push out into any of those continuums and provide services. Our last slide shows, many of you know where we're located. Our elementary sites are primarily Hanan and Johnson with those SPOLOST funds that redid those sites. We also have two classrooms that remained at Eagle Ridge to serve that Northside population and just because we just didn't have enough room in our midtown site. So thankfully, they've let us continue to remain there. Our middle school side is at Double Church's Middle School, and our high school site, which was our first one that opened, is Jordan Vocational. So while we have those sites, we offer the continuum across the district, but those are our main sites, and we thank you for that continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Now we'll have Ms. Victoria Robinson to come up and speak about the behavioral supports program.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Lewis and cabinet members. My name is Victoria Robinson, and I'm the behavioral supports program manager. I'm here today with Mr. Ryan Schwach, who is our lead behavior analyst for the behavioral supports program, and I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Okay, when we look at our behavioral supports continuum of services, we currently help to support students all the way from gen ed to our therapeutic day school. In our interrelated special education supports, we're seeing kids at their homeschool and providing not only consultation and assessment, but also we're doing a lot of training, not just with special education teachers, but with administrators and all teachers in the district, as we've seen a growing number of students who face behavioral issues in the classroom. For our behavioral supports classrooms, we have transitional classrooms, which are students that receive supports throughout the day, they come in and out as they need the supports. We have our behavior support functional classrooms, which is a newer model classroom for students that may be higher socially but have some cognitive difficulties in their adaptive curriculum and still need that behavior support model. We have our behavior support collaborative classrooms, which are located in our schools that are more self-contained, students are there throughout the day receiving supports through their mental health therapist, BCBA's, behavior technicians, and then all the way to the therapeutic day school, which is our most restrictive setting. We are able to provide this support continuum through our partners at Chance Light, who help provide us with teachers, behavior specialists, middle health therapists, and curriculum and instruction support. Our elementary sites are at Gention, Dawson, and Allen Elementarys. Our middle school sites are at Blackman Road, Midland Middle, and Arnold Middle, and our high school sites are at Shaw, Kendrick, and Northside with the therapeutic day program located at the Marshall Success Center.
So one of the positive things that we have as far as measured outcomes with our partnership with Chance Light, and we have Mr. Deacon Seglio who's here with us today, student growth for the 21-22 school year, we had 93% of our kids pass their courses. We had an increase of 40% in attendance with our students, and we had nine kids graduate from BSP. We also decreased disruptive behaviors and out-of-school suspension. Combined, before some of these students entered in BSP, they had a total of 481 out-of-school suspension days. That was decreased to 34 out-of-school suspension days, which was a 92% decrease. We also moved 65% of our students to a lesser restrictive environment. One of the pieces of programmatic impact that I talk about all the time is our therapeutic day program, and we talk about that as a fun cost savings to us. We now have, as of December, when we left for Christmas, 49 students in our therapeutic day program at a residential facility treatment cost of $200,000 apiece. That would be $9,800,000 for those students. We took in 16 additional kids from August to December of students who moved into our county, who came from a residential facility or had those services in their IP. So we were able to absorb them and support them within their home in Muskogee County. Thank you. 16 from August additional, from August to December. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson and Mr. Schwach. Now we'll have Ms. Wendell Crowell for the specialized adaptive curriculum program.
Good evening. I'm Wendell Crowell, specialized adaptive curriculum program manager, and we serve students that are significantly cognitively delayed in concurrent with they have adaptive needs. So our goal is to make them as independent as possible, once they graduate and have those life skills, that they will be able to be as independent as possible. They are either considered moderately or significantly profound, or they are moderate, severe, or significantly profound in their ability levels. We have our Behavior Support Collaborative classrooms, which are located in our schools that are more self-contained. Students are there throughout the day, receiving supports through their mental health therapist, BCBA's, behavior technicians, and then all the way to the therapeutic day school, which is our most restrictive setting. We are able to provide this support continuum through our partners at Chanceline, who help provide us with teachers, behavior specialists, middle health therapists and curriculum and instruction support. Our elementary sites are at Gention, Dawson and Allen Elementarys. Our middle school sites are at Blackman Road, Midland Middle and Arnold Middle. And our high school sites are at Shaw, Kendrick and Northside with the therapeutic day program located at the Marshall Success Center.
So one of the positive things that we have as far as measured outcomes with our partnership with Chanceline, and we have Mr. Deacon Seglio who's here with us today. Student growth for the 21-22 school year, we had 93% of our kids pass their courses. We had an increase of 40% in attendance with our students, and we had nine kids graduate from BSP. We also decreased disruptive behaviors and out-of-school suspension. Combined, before some of these students entered in BSP, they had a total of 481 out-of-school suspension days. That was decreased to 34 out-of-school suspension days, which was a 92% decrease. We also moved 65% of our students to a lesser restrictive environment. One of the pieces of programmatic impact that I talk about all the time is our therapeutic day program. And we talk about that as a fun cost savings to us. We now have, as of December, when we left for Christmas, 49 students in our therapeutic day program at a residential facility treatment cost of $200,000 apiece. That would be $9,800,000 for those students. We took in 16 additional kids from August to December of students who moved into our county, who came from a residential facility or had those services in their IP. So we were able to absorb them and support them within their home in Muskogee County. Thank you. 16 from August additional, from August to December. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson and Mr. Schwedt. Now we'll have Ms. Windale Crowell for the Specialized Adaptive Curriculum Program.
Good evening. I'm Windale Crowell, Specialized Adaptive Curriculum Program Manager. And we serve students that are significantly cognitively delayed in concurrent with they have adaptive needs. So our goal is to make them as independent as possible. Once they graduate and have those life skills, that they will be able to be as independent as possible. We, they are either considered moderately or significantly profound or they are, oh my gosh, moderate, severe or significantly profound in their ability levels. And that is concurrent with their adaptive skills. They are, it's not just one piece, it's several pieces that go together, and both are impacting their needs. We have at least 42 classes across the district for K through 12. And we also are housed in 22 different schools. So these are our best that we have, and we're trying to make them all that they can be and as independent as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowell. And next, we'll have Mr. Gavin Bernstein come and present regarding the Transition Support Program. And just to give you a little bit of, just a little bit of background on that. One of our, I feel like the goal of education is to be able to produce successful or productive citizens in society. And so one of the key pieces is transition. And so when students leave here, what will they be able to do and how do we prepare them to do that? So our Transition Program really focuses in on that. And Gavin will come, Mr. Bernstein, I'm sorry, will come forward and talk to you a little bit about some of the partnerships that we have in the community to help our students be able to do those community-based instruction opportunities.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name's Gavin Bernstein. I'm the Program Manager for Transition Programs. So again, transition planning begins at 14 or as they're entering into ninth grade. Starts off with literally developing a plan on their interests, what they want to study, what they want to be when they're older. And so we have that whole continuum of whether it's someone that's an interrelated student, and we're doing transition planning throughout high school, to our students that are in our self-contained classrooms that we have 12-plus-one programs. So what you see are some highlights from the Transition Program in years past and that we'll have as well this year. Traditionally, we've had a Transition Program Career Fair where we partner up with Goodwill Industries. And it's a great program for finding jobs for our students within the community with those skillsets that they've learned and have planned out throughout, starting at 14. Then we also have something called High School High Tech, and this is where we partner with Georgia Voke Rehab. And we send classrooms out with teachers, obviously, to different facilities, whether it's a technical school, large-scale facilities where they can learn about job skills and also education after high school. Okay? Then we also have our Transition Programs here in our schools where we have several classrooms. We have Met Columbus High, we've Met Hardaway, we've Met Jordan, and we also Met Northside, where they're community-based instruction classes, where they go out to our community partners, such as working at animal control, working at Publix, working at local hotels and restaurants, as well as volunteer organizations, like Feeding the Valley. And they go out and they learn job skills, and when they come back into the classroom, they're done with their traditional learning. They're 12-plus, so they've already completed their 12 years. And they're learning about daily living skills, what it's like to create a budget, how to live. And then lastly, we have, and not last but not least, Project Search, which is run through TSUS as well. And we have interns that go to TSUS every day, they're bused to TSUS, and they go through rotations there, learning different job skills. And through that, we have an employment council where we help them get jobs and we teach them interviewing skills. And a lot of our community-based programs do that as well, but this is just at that next level. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. As we begin to come to a close, we'll want to also cover that we also have related services. We have a continuum of services, but we also have related services in our district where we may have students who need speech services, occupational therapy, counseling, physical therapy and all those array of different areas. So we want to be able to share that with you guys. And we're just proud to be a part of this district and have the opportunity to be able to support the students and the parents in our district. So thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Thank you to the team. We appreciate that. Do you have any questions? We do have lights.
Question, I do have a comment. First, I would like to address the Board and the Superintendent and the Cabinet. Trying to do this. I'm so proud. I'm just so proud. Thank you.
Ms. Changers.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. I do want to say I am impressed with the numbers, especially the number of out-of-school suspensions, because we cannot teach an empty seat, as our superintendent tells us all the time. So it's very important that we're able to keep these students in the classroom. I do, just for clarity's sake, want to make sure that I've digested and I understand the program where it is now and where it's going in the future. So we have three tiers, if you will. Behavior Support Program, the interrelated program and the Specialized Adaptive Curriculum, correct? Those are the three areas that you all just talked about.
Okay, so we talked about interrelated, we talked about Autism Support Program, the Behavior Support Program and the Specialized Adaptive Curriculum Program. So it's four.
Okay, four of them.
And then we also talked about transition.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Out of all of those, Chanceline is a company that we are, yeah, we are, what am I, contracting that out? So it's not Muskogee County School District employees. Can you tell me, are they involved in all of these areas or just the Behavior Support Program?
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. Are they involved in all the areas? Okay?
Yes.
So I'm gonna have Victoria come up.
There's the expert segment.
So when it becomes with students who have deficits in their behavior skills or we see they have mental health components or issues, we serve across the continuum. So we kind of dip our toe into every piece. But we, so if you have a student who's in that interrelated section and they're in a co-taught classroom and they're struggling, one of our board-certified behavior analysts may go in and help with a functional behavior assessment and write a behavior intervention plan for the student. We may do whole, you know, classroom training with teachers. So we're kind of, we're through the whole continuum, but our specific supports, when you look at us as a program, it starts at that therapeutic day. Then we have those self-contained classrooms and functional classrooms. And then our transition is like a resource that we're trying to rotate the kids back out into interrelated where we still follow them and provide supports. But we're, if they're struggling with behavior, so if they have behavior that impedes their learning, you know, we're the ones that you call.
Okay, so you really could serve, service all 5,000 students at some point in time?
Well, it depends. We've done multiple trainings and our team has done multiple trainings with faculty and staff. We get called on consult all the time to come into a classroom and do classroom observations. Sometimes it's to come in to do specific student observation. We have a lot, we've had a lot of requests this year from schools to do training with the schools due to sort of the uptick in behavior that we've seen just generally across the district.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. So my next question is sort of about, I guess this is a question for Dr. Lewis. I know that we are under a three-year contract or we were on a, I want to know, where are we in that process, year two, year three? And then is the plan for us to renew that? Or we originally talked about that after the three years, that we would build enough bench strength that we could take over the program, hire Muskogee County employees to sort of take this over? So just for clarity of where we're going in the future, what's the projection?
So yes, we were in a three-year contract. I believe we're in, this is the third year, is that correct, I believe, if I'm mistaken, third year. Is that right? Fourth year, well, actually, so we're in, and so our goal is to build that capacity. Yes, now there are some areas that, looking at the, you've heard the increase in therapeutic day school that we have. That's one that we'll probably have to continue to work toward and incorporate because that is a unique set, skillset and knowledge-based set. But the idea is to build our capacity. Now, that's also contingent upon us being able to hire and keep special education teachers. But that is the intent, is to continue building capacity with our team and be able to develop those skills across the continuum.
Sounds good. So it sounds like we will have to renew this contract.
Some aspects of that, correct, which is what we've always intended. We thought we'd build bench strength, but there will be some aspects that we would try and continue to build, like the therapeutic day school that typically you don't see school districts have. But when you look at the cost-effectiveness of that from the standpoint of the $200,000 typically for a bed for one student during the course of the year, because you've got to remember, those students are typically in an assignment 24/7/365. So even when school's not in session, we are required to provide service.
Perfect, sounds good.
But to be clear, haven't we already renewed it one time?
Yes, we renewed it, after one year, then we renewed it for the three-year contract.
We did some kind of vote last summer.
That was for?
Chanceline.
Chanceline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what she was asking about, what year we are with Chanceline.
Dr. Vickers, are you, can you speak to that?
I know we're beyond three years.
Once, and I believe we're in year two. We'll be in year two next year.
Of the second round. I mean, we've been doing this for at least four or five years.
Four years total. We're in year four.
So we've renewed after the third year. We're in year four. When the new school year starts, it will be the next year, and so year five. And so I believe after that, then it will be time to have a conversation with Chanceline on partnering, where we will partner with them in the future. And as Dr. Lewis has shared, it's very, very important to look at the aspects of the therapeutic day school and the cost-effectiveness for that and the results that we've yielded in having that partnership for the best needs of our children.
Also, I think that we have to be realistic, that when this renewed, renewable opportunity comes along, we're going to look at, you know, of course, where we are and what the needs are, because we still have to service the needs of the children. And we're still trying to adequately staff, you know, what we, in those areas. So we have these challenges. So in the beginning, back when Moses was a baby, when we started approaching this, we knew that we wanted to be able to provide these services ourselves. And what we're continuing to learn as we continue to have these presentations is, are we going to be able to do this ourselves? That's the question, that the results that they're producing to us at each presentation is because we have this partnership.
The other thing, Madam Chair, if I may, one of the things we ran into early on in the process was, it's, the cost I mentioned was if you could find a bed. The problem is, when we started looking before, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think the last time we checked, there was one bed available in South Carolina, Georgia and Alabama total. Is that correct? So?
What was that?
I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So then it comes back down to the moral and ethical imperative of providing the services for the students as they need. And if you can't find a bed, that just means then they're not being served. So this is a way, and a much more efficient, cost-effective way of serving the needs of all the students that need these kind of services. So.
Right, I think, sorry, are you done? Yeah, and I just think part of the discussion when we renewed it last summer was to have more of this information as we were doing the vet to renew. We didn't have as much background in the month leading up to it. This helps, but yeah, to revisit again and probably boil down more to what exactly Chanceline is doing as we prepared.
Well, and one of the things I do want to say too, our goal is to try and move students to the least restrictive environment. And as we've heard, we've had several students that we've transitioned from fairly restrictive environments to less restrictive and even returned to their general classroom population, which is ultimately the goal for them from an educational standpoint, because we want to make sure they're exposed to the curriculum, they need to be successful on whether it's Georgia milestones or moving on in life in general. But we can't just, it's, one of the worst things you can do is take a child and just move them. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the rest of the class, and it's not fair to the teacher that's got to provide those services for a child. So this is why it's that transition of moving them back and forth. And what is, it's really pretty, and I would invite anybody if you'd like to come see it, to come watch a student. For me, it's really great to see them when they realize, I need to regulate, I need to go back to that classroom for a period of time so I can get myself under control and then return to the regular classroom. And we actually have students who are saying, listen, I need some time out, I need to go back to that classroom. And they work with a teacher with whom they are familiar, and then they get themselves regulated again and they can return to the classroom and be successful without disturbing or disrupting other students in the classroom. And that's really important, because we don't, obviously, we don't want to impair or impede any of our regular ed students from getting their education either. So this is a great way to meet both needs in a way that is the least disruptive and the least restrictive when it's appropriate to do so.
Mr. Cantrell and then Ms. Buckman.
Getting back to Chanceline, we signed a three-year contract. It renewed, I assume, after three years, became four now. On these contract renewals, are they a three-year or are they year by year after that?
Every contract we do, we can do up to three years by state law, but they're renewable every year.
Okay, so basically, it's a year to year after you?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay. Also, it says here, cost for those students to be served at a residential treatment was $9.8 million. Now, that's not what we're paying, that's what it would cost, is what they're saying. Okay.
That's what we'd be saying, well.
What do we pay ballpark, because I'm talking about that, except $9.8, what is our?
Right around $6 million for all the services provided through Chanceline, not just the therapeutic day school that you saw listed there. It's for all of the continuum of services provided by Chanceline.
Okay, good. Thank you, Sarah.
Let me make sure I can be heard. So first, I want to thank Dr. Vickers and, is it Dr. Portis, for indulging with me today. They spent a lot of time with me answering all my questions. And I really appreciate it, because I know they had to be patient as I continued to ask. So I just have one little thing, you know, just one other thing, because, and I know, you know, just from listening, we all can see that you've done like a comprehensive analysis of what we need, our needs, and brought the supports to support our needs. It was just one little thing, and I just thought about it, that's why I didn't ask it. So we talked about the Transition Program and also how kids are going to the various, I think, the various jobs, you know. We talked about how we are doing that. Now, I was wondering, what about post-opportunities for our high school kids? Do we follow up and try to secure jobs after high school?
So in our, we have to follow up as far as that annual report. So we have to be able to go out and follow and find out what our students are doing after high school. So we have to kind of keep track of that anyway by the state. So in that regard, yes. As far as, you know, like if you are a regular graduate, do we assist with those types of like employment after school? Is that what you're?
No, I was thinking more in terms of autism and the ones who are more mentally challenged.
So they have the option to come back after, for, up until, you know, 21, 22?
After 22, I mean, after the age 22, are we trying to follow up post-after high school? Because we, I see that we are providing opportunities for these kids to have work experience. Okay, so, and a lot of times, it's like class work experience. Or is it our goal also, you know, just wondering if we do this, if we're trying to like track?
There is, somebody presented that, that's what they do, right?
We track, we do track after, but then, I think.
We may do it, but she didn't present it, that's why I was asking the question.
Okay.
So as part of the annual report, we have to track students after they leave. We have to track them for a period of time after they leave. But I think the thing that we can provide most to those students after they leave is those connections after like Voke Rehab, those different types of agencies that are out there that kind of supports families after they leave, after they leave school.
We connect them with families and agencies.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And as an aside, I had a conversation with one of the local Publix Managers, as most of you may be aware. Publix is opening a couple of new stores in the area, and he reached out to me asking about students to work. So through CTAE and through some of these students who have proven to be very successful in that environment, we hope to be able to help them staff up, and it's a win-win. The kids get some employment opportunities and they get some workers that they desperately need.
I just have one more question. Something I didn't know, you mentioned that we service up to age 22. Do we have those students at the high school and are they? And are they, are they serviced in the same classroom with like 14, 15-year-olds or...
Okay, I'm a, okay, so we, up to 21 and 22, but there's the students who are not graduating with standard diplomas or regular diplomas. And so they may be in a, in a transition program, like what Mr. Bernstein just talked about, or they may be back in maybe a CEP classroom or something along those lines. But not all, not all students are able to come back like that.
But I definitely want to recognize our community partners, without whom none of this would be possible. When you talk about TSIS and the Project Search Program, when you talk about Publix...
It was a whole list of those community partners.
So we are very fortunate to have a lot of community partners who are willing to...
Bring them back, bring that list back next week so that we can recognize them and say thank you. But I do want board members to, to, to note the last thing Ms. Victoria said, and that was being able to go into the classroom and provide those supports and so services for teachers and for specific students. I think that is very important, that we understand that that support is out there because we do hear a lot about the challenges that teachers are facing in the classroom. And so we just need to know that we heard that, that they are addressing that and supporting that. Ms. Williams?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this this time. When, when we, when we last did our SPOLOST campaign, what we told the public was we needed the support to serve all of our students, meeting them where they were. Our ac- our academic, our athletic, our artistic, and our autistic. I have never seen, or heard, or spoken to, a district anywhere else that embraces the concept of meeting every child at the door and serving what they need like this district does. And I am very proud to be part of that. And I'm proud of this team that just presented to us and everybody in this room that supports that team because you're phenomenal. I mean, I use it to sell Columbus. When I talk to parents, I have a staff member who was very worried about moving into Columbus because she had a child that wouldn't be on this spectrum. And she cannot brag enough about the services and how this district embraced her child and is determined to see that child succeed. It's amazing, and I thank you all.
And, and we're not perfect, we do make mistakes, but we are working to try and rectify those and address those as we go forward in all of our classrooms, whether it's sped or otherwise. So we don't claim to be perfect, but I can tell you, we are so much better than we were. And we have many more services to provide for our students than we ever had before. And as we continue to grow and build that capacity, we're going to continue to see our students thrive and grow and be successful. And I'm just really excited because our mission statement talks about all students. And it's going to take a commitment on everyone's behalf, but, but patience as well as we grow. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Board members, you know, we try to be consistent. Before we get into our committee reports, I've been recognized that Ms. Abdullah has come in. Ms. Abdullah, we have not started our committee reports. Somebody was coming up.
She's next on the presentation, but...
Okay. Ms. Abdullah, did you want to come tonight or do you want to come next week? Because we had already gone past the public agenda portion. I'm going once? All right, come on up to the podium, you have five minutes. So it seems like God is always shifting my direction from what I intend to do when I come up here as I continue to be the community member that speaks for all the children in Muskogee County School District. So I am a parent of a child with special needs, actually. And so this is my shift for today. What I'm sharing with you, I, I love research, I love reading, I love reading anything, I don't care what it's about. So that's the article that I'm sharing with you, eight effective habits of excellent board, school boards, or high-performing school boards. High performing means that our third graders are not performing at 28%. So we're not there yet, but I do believe that Muskogee County School District can be that district. So as I'm listening, let me begin by first saying congratulations to those of you that have chosen to run for election for this school board so to be responsible for the education of all children in Muskogee County School District. So congratulations to you for being willing to serve and to give up your time, as Ms. Buckner was saying, you know, coming to spend time and talking to people at the district office to make sure that she has great understanding. Secondly, I'd, I'd like to give a special shout out to the special education team. My daughter is a sixth grader. She's had four executive directors of special education. And I will say that by far, Dr. Portress has exceeded my expectations. So I am very thankful and grateful for Dr. Portress and her team. However, with that being said, it's not time for us to pat ourselves on the back with what we're doing in the district with regards to special education students because we are still very far off. Unfortunately for me personally, I'm having to withdraw my child to make sure she gets what she needs so that she can be successful as an adult, because that's how I see all of my children. Whether it is my child with special needs, whether it is my 26-year-old who's working on a master's at Columbus State University and will graduate debt-free from both bachelor's and master's, or whether it be my son that I had to pull out and put at Brookstone to make sure that his needs were being met. I talk to parents all the time who are very frustrated with our special education system. Part of it is, you have a team that is doing everything that they can. And I have had experience with Chanceline, and I'm very thankful for Chanceline, to be honest. But the problem is, when you have a special education team that is giving their all 100% and really trying to meet the needs of all students, but your school staff is not doing the follow-through, we're never going to get where we're, where we're saying we're at because we're not there. Or where we want to be with regards to special education. Now, and, and at another time, I will speak about all the things in just this year that I have gone through trying to support my child, who was here last time, that does have special needs. This has been the most stressful year that I have ever experienced with her education. And I do understand that it is a transition because she went from elementary to middle school. And I also understand that even at the beginning of elementary, it, it took about two years before we finally got a smooth roll to that ball. But she doesn't have two years for me to throw away as a sixth grader because she's got to be ready to go to college. And when I say she's got to be ready to go to college, I mean she's leaving me to go to college because she's that kind of child. When I talked to her, because she asked me to homeschool her, and I finally agreed that I would do it, and I said, you have to understand that if I homeschool you, I am preparing you for college. And her response was, I'm going to pack up all my clothes, I'm going to pack up all my toys, and I'm, and I'm leaving. That's who she is. My 26-year-old still lives at home. That's not who she is. So I say that to say that as a district, we need to slow with the pats on the back and make sure that what we're saying is really who we are. We're not a stellar district yet, but we can be that beacon of excellence that, you know, is on our mission and vision. We can do that, but it's not going to happen without accountability, without being honest about where we're at and who we are. And then taking those incremental steps to keep moving us forward. So I hope you will continue to put up with me as I come stand before you, possibly every month, not every week, not, not two times, because I have a family and things to do with my life, so I don't have time to do all that. But I do want to make sure that I continue to advocate for all students. And I'm going to say one last thing, and I know I'm going to go over a little bit. I saw a child at the store that was a former student of mine last year. And one of my classes required me to tutor students for 10 days. And this, this baby, she's a third grader now, ran up to me. I didn't see her running when she was doing it, but her mother was like, oh my God, who's she running after? When I turned around, she was like, almost at me. And I turned around and she embraced me in a hug. And I asked her mom one question, how is her reading? Because that's what I had tutored her in. And her mom told me, at first we were very worried because she couldn't read at all. And then all of a sudden, she came home and she was reading, and now she's a straight A student.
Good job.
10 days of tutoring was what I had to do. So we can do what needs to be done, but we've got to do what needs to be done. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Abdullah. And I do want to say that for our PES department, that the data that you provided is looking at all of our children and all of those different areas of exceptionality. And thank you for doing the work that you do. We are not reporting that we are perfect or stellar, but what we're reporting is that we are servicing the needs of each and every student. And we got the receipts, as the young people like to say, of the work, the results that you're, that you've provided us tonight are accurate, and we believe them to be true. And we want to thank you. Did you want to add something? Okay, and then we want to thank you for everything that you do. And, and the teachers are, are providing or, or, or contributing to the results by sharing with the supports that they're receiving from our PES department. And, and, and also enlightening you on what you can do to support them more. And you're listening to that, and you're addressing those needs one step at a time, one brick at a time. And so we want to make sure that I, I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that, that we, that you are doing the work and we, and we see you and we appreciate you, Ms. Buckner.
Just to reiterate what Mrs. Green said, we do think, like I said, we are, everybody's working hard. And you have done a comprehensive analysis and provided the services that we need. Everybody's working hard, but everybody has to continue to work hard. And it also should always be said, there's always going to be work to do.
That's right.
So we're always working towards something. We are doing good work, but we have to continue to do good work. And there's always going to be work to be done.
Always room for improvement, school is never out.
Always room for improvement, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Now, we will move on. Oh, okay, Ms. Chambers.
So that is why I asked the question that I asked about the three-year program. Because I think if we, if we know we're going to need Chanceline and we know these students are growing with the wraparound services, then the next plan has to sort of include that. And we have to know that that's what we're working towards. Not working towards a plan that alleviates it, but if it's something that you know we're going to need and continue to need, then that has to be part of the plan and part of our thought process at the board because it's a budget issue. But then the thought process of the people who are working with the kids, whether it be in Chanceline or with Muskogee County School District. So, so, so my, that's, that was what my question was for, for clarity. We, we have done the work, we've looked at three years, and the original plan has changed. It has changed. And, and I don't think any of our, us as board members have a problem with that because the proof is in the pudding. We've seen that we've gone from 481 students to 49 students? 48? 34 students that are able to stay in the classroom. So, so what I, my question is, sort of, not hypothetical, but just to get us to think about the future. Can we think about a, a school district that has to have these services because of the world that we live in today? So if we know that, then we plan for that for the future. We don't say, oh, we're going to do it three years and out with the bathwater. No, it's here. If it's here to stay, let's say that.
Exactly.
And then we can do the work of doing the improvement instead of starting over every three years. That was my point.
Well, point well taken, but if you'll recall, if anybody can look at, back three years ago and think of what we've done with the last three years, hadn't had an impact. So we're going to adapt, as you always have to, you have to adapt. And we'll adapt as we go forward. But again, we're always working toward, to everyone's point, continuous improvement and building capacity. With or without Chanceline, in every program or certain programs, it's still about building capacity in our people because that's what we ultimately want to accomplish. Because that makes us a stronger, better district in the long term. But I just want to mention again, again, like anything else, there are going to be some people who get the benefit of one program or another. But I, I just want to say Chanceline has proven to be a great partner with us, and we've been used as an example for other districts, and several have come to us because they're dealing with these challenges but didn't have the wherewithal to address those challenges. And this is one means by which they could do so. And they've been very grateful about that. And while Mark is here with, Mark DeConseglio with Chanceline, I just want to say thank you for that partnership. And I just want to say he has been receptive, he's always available. I don't know many people that you can call up on a contract basis, no matter what time of day or night, and get them, and they answer the phone. But in my experience with, with Mr. DeConseglio, that's been my experience, that he is answering my phone call anytime of day or night, on the weekend, whatever it might be. And I can expect him to take the call, and then if there's a need to be for a follow-up, he gets back to me in a very timely manner. And I do appreciate that, and that means the world to me personally, so, and professionally. So thank you.
All right, our next presentation. Actually, Ms. Buckner, it's actually in the Education Committee. And board members, you will notice that your names are on the committee as they were for 2022. And I guess we would let Ms. Karen Pino after, if you want to, before we elect offices or afterwards, you elect the new chair. If you want to change committees, but we're, we're continuing with the committees we have for 2022. Yes, ma'am, thank you so very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Thomas. I'm the pre-K director, and it's my honor and privilege to talk to you today about our pre-K program. I'm under the leadership of Keith Seifer and Christine Hall in the Division of Teaching and Learning. I want to share with you that we currently have 50 lottery-funded Georgia pre-K classes at 18 of our elementary schools. And there is a description of the, the different types of classes that we offer here in Muskogee County School District. This allows us to serve 1,080 students, which is approximately 48% of our incoming kindergarten students. Here is a breakdown of the pre-K sites by region and the number of classes in each region. I want to share a little data about pre-K. So in 2020, 2021 school year, we had 1,398 applications. Last year, we had 1,691 applications. That was due to a group effort of our wonderful communications department, our fantastic principals of those 18 schools. And in addition, we had a help from our wonderful library system, Mr. Alan Hartness. Our WIC program sent out text messages to families as well. So it was a group effort. As you can see, based on another little tip of data, our number of classes have also increased over the past three years. So give, give yourselves a round of applause for that. That's a group effort in our community. Next, I would like to share a little information about Georgia Pre-K Week. It was wonderful, guys. Thank you so much for coming and volunteering to read and visit our pre-K classrooms. Check out Dr. Lewis, having a good time with our pre-K students, as well as local community leaders, like our mayor came out to read. Our sheriff, Mr. Countryman, came out to read to our students. Our local leaders also came, Mr. Bell, our, our chief, Art, came, and several, and even my chief went out and read to our pre-K students.
And board member Kathy Williams?
That's, Ms. Williams, I put your picture up there for you. We love you at South Columbus Elementary and Key. So thank everyone for coming out to read. Next, I want to share that we are continuing to utilize our adoptive pre-K curriculum, which is Frog Street, along with our primary purpose of teaching our JEL standards. We want to also acknowledge the fact that these, this resource provide... parents with hands-on activities that support the weekly lessons in the classroom. Guess what? Pre-K also applied for a grant from our D C A L department, and we received the summer Georgia pre-K Summer Transition Program Grant. And that grant targeted incoming kindergarten students. It's a six-week, full-day program. And it's to target students coming into our kindergarten for the upcoming school year. There are specific criteria. The first summer we apply, we had sixteen classes. Our second summer, twenty classes. And we don't know what the future holds, but we want to at least maintain twenty. I want to also recognize our wonderful partners in our community that comes into our classrooms and support our pre-K students. They provide direct and indirect services for our students and their families, ranging from coming in and reading routine, wonderful, rich literature stories to our students, providing art lessons from our Columbus Museum Pals program, providing WIC vouchers for our families so that they don't have to check the students out and take them to their office anymore. They're delivered to the schools. Job training programs are offered to our families, Energy Assistance Program, and other wraparound services. We work hard to try to partner with our parents, see our parents as partners. We keep them informed by utilizing our Canvas program and other ways, as well as meeting with our parents. We're required to meet with them twice a year. But we have developed a pre-K progress report to keep the parents informed of their students' progress. Currently, our pre-K staff includes fifty pre-K teachers, fifty-three paraprofessionals, as well as our district hired a pre-K academic coach to support our teachers. Fifty-six percent of our pre-K teachers are currently certified teachers, and forty-four percent of them are bright from the start, pre-K teachers with bachelor's degrees. We provide annual training. They participate in new teacher orientation. And we also provide local monthly trainings where the teachers can earn at least six to ten continuing education credit hours. Well, we're in this season right now where we are currently recruiting students for the 2023-2024 school year. I just want to let you know, it's a simple process. It's online. The families go to the district tab, click on Families, and there's a pre-K application developed by our Division of Teaching, I mean, developed by D I S. This is a year-round progress, process where we try to recruit families. Whenever there's a vacant seat, we want to make sure it's filled. Our timeline is listed on the chart, but I want you to know that it's open. And we close the application process for the initial lottery February the 10th. All families receive email results of the lottery, and then they are encouraged to complete the online registration process beginning March seven, March 1. We talked about how parents apply. I went in greater detail on that slide. And I want to leave you with this. Pre-K matters. School readiness is a good predictor of long-term achievement. They are forty percent less likely to be retained in a great grade level. They are thirty-one percent less likely to need special education services. They are four times more likely to graduate from high school and college. Pre-K matters, and I need your help to continue to encourage our families in our community to enroll their children into pre-K. I would love to be able to tell you that we have one hundred percent of our students coming into kindergarten, that have attended a structured program, but that is not the case. But with our wonderful daycare partnerships out in the community and our program, I hope that one day, every kindergarten teacher will be able to say, "All of my children came in with a good basic foundation, so we were able to focus in on instruction." That's it for me. Any questions?
I do, I do want to, I, I, yes, you sound enthusiastic and ready to take on the marketing of getting our families enrolled in the pre-K program. Thank you for all that you do. But I would like to know what percentage that is.
Sixty-four percent.
That are not, that have not been to pre-K?
Fifty-two percent.
Fifty-two go into kindergarten who have not attended?
Can I clarify a little bit more information?
That's my question, because according to-
Right, our program.
According to your slide, I'm going to ask my question, because it goes with that one. Of the applicants, we're only serving, we're serving sixty-four percent of those who applied.
Because of our capacity.
Right.
Yes.
So talk about how we can grow that a little, you know, because we really would love to be able to accommodate a hundred percent of the demand.
Right.
And then about what percentage of the students?
So currently, I will, we are not able to serve all those families. So when we are not able to serve them, we offer them a list of all the community daycares that have free Georgia pre-K classes inside of the daycares. We give them the lists. We give them the phone numbers. So, and we even call daycares to say, hey, do you have an opening? And we refer. Yes, quality-rated daycares.
But to answer her question, the state of Georgia assigns us how many seats we can have?
Yes, they do. And so by maintaining a waiting list, we are able to encourage and request additional units each year.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And I'm going to try to answer them at one time.
Okay.
The first is about the Frog Street curriculum. Is that the state-issued curriculum for pre-K?
One of the approved curriculums that's on their list. We actually thoroughly vetted those. We had them delivered to our school district, teachers, principals. We had special education. We had a member from the Division of Information System. We followed the regular textbook adoption procedure. And that was the one that was selected.
Okay, sounds good. The other thing is, as you said, pre-K is important. And I think we could increase our literacy rate the more kids we have come through the pre-K program. So I was wondering, the pre-K classes are at the elementary schools. Is there any opportunity for the kindergarten teachers to collaborate with the pre-K teachers on what is expected of the kids when they get to kindergarten and things of that nature? And then my last question has to do with how exactly does the lottery work?
Okay, so let's talk about vertical alignment. That opportunity is put in place by the school principals, the eighteen principals, that serves those pre-K classes. And they schedule vertical alignment meetings with the pre-K and kindergarten teachers. So how can, what was the next question?
The lottery system. I know that every year, some parents call and their child wasn't selected.
Yes.
Just for my own clarity, how does the lottery system work? Does someone choose-
Some weren't selected for the school they want now.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true, too.
That's true.
But I just, just so that I have the clarity on-
But here's the basic process.
How are you deciding which thousand students we're going to take?
Okay, so it's a computer program. All of the families that apply during the window are entered into the lottery. The computer program randomly selects families for each location based on their home address. Now, there are some families that do want other schools that are not their home school. We, the priority is for students that live in their residence, they're selected first, and the other friends go on the waiting list. And when there's vacancies, we can call and offer them a seat for their preferential school.
And oftentimes, we have certain locations with seats available. They just don't want to go.
Right. But, 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 I want you to know that this year, we didn't have vacancies. All of the schools were filled this year, and they're still filled now.
Oh, no, no, my other feedback question's for me. I'll get back to it.
I just have a question. Of those that don't get selected by our lottery, and you give them the free Georgia pre-K that local preschools or, you know, places have available, are there any that still miss? Is there still a gap?
Yes.
How big is that gap that want to go to pre-K, but the free services in our school system don't allow them?
So here's an example. So when we came back from the holidays, I was out at a school helping a teacher. And so I was talking to a kindergarten teacher who was in the hallway, and I wanted to know the answer to that question. She says she currently has twenty-three kindergarten students. So based on just a conversation, I asked her, would you mind letting me know? And she said, out of the twenty-three students, only eleven of her kindergarten students participated in a structured kindergarten program, whether it was our program or one of the community daycares.
But, but I'm just, that's a shocking number. But out of these one thousand six hundred and ninety-one that are actively seeking pre-K, how many of those are missing the service, the ones who actually want it?
I haven't been able to track that yet to be able to give you a specific answer. I wish there was a way that we can find that information out when families are registering and completing the online registration process.
Okay, so do, does D I S hear that? We need a line that says, "Did you attend a certified pre-K program?"
That would be awesome if we can make that happen.
Yeah, because I would like to know that. What does that look like? Because that's data that impacts
Future.
Success.
Literacy and how we approach it.
That's right.
Are we prepared for, if it's, if the number is something like fifty-seven percent, are we prepared to, I mean, teachers are always prepared, but I mean, are we prepared to provide the resources that are needed to support that? I'm just, I would like to know what that answer is, if we could get, if we could add that to our application. All right? Are we ready to move on, Ms. Tilley? Do you have something else, Ms. Jackson?
I have a question. First of all, I just love your personality. It is, it is, you got pre-K written all over you. I love it. But my question is, I know you apply online, but is that the only way you can apply for pre-K? Can you go to the schools or?
Schools are able to assist parents. We invite them to come to our office, and we would assist them with completing the application. Also, myself, if they call in, I put the application in. I said, hey, are you comfortable giving me the information? I'll complete it for you. And my team does the same thing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
As much as I'm keeping an eye on kickoff time, I do have a question. And this is really more for Mr. Seifer. When, the summer learning program, when it says pre-K, is that, that's for students that have already gone through our pre-K, and then they can go to the summer learning program before going into kindergarten?
There's criteria to that. So the first part of that would be that a student did not attend a pre-K program during the year. If they didn't attend a pre-K program during the year, they're top priority. They get into the six-week program. Then there's, I think there's E S O L students, language students that would have access. And then if it's recommended by a teacher for a student that was in pre-K that needed additional support, they would then go into the program. And the numbers are capped at twelve per class, twelve students per class.
Okay, because I think that is good to hear. And if there's some way, because I know they apply in the spring, if there is some way to market the summer program to the ones that don't?
We currently do. We secure a list from Center Registration, wonderful team, and of all the incoming families who have registered for kindergarten, we use that list to reach out to those families.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Took care of your committee there.
Can I, can I say, I just want to say one thing about Kimberly Thomas. I have never met a person who is dedicated to pre-K like she is. She, she believes in pre-K, and we all do, too, because it's important. But she's one, and when she says she goes out and meets with parents and meets with teachers and helps, she covers classes. So, and we wouldn't be in the position we are today because, without her efforts. She has done a wonderful job. We've added two, four more classes. If the numbers are up, we'll add more classes. We just need classroom space. And we have to talk, we work with our principals to make sure that that happens. So excited that Ms. Thomas is on our staff and working with us. Fabulous job. She does an outstanding job.
I agree. So thank you, Ms. Buckner. Ms. Sly, you are inheriting the Discipline Committee. And so if you would hit that mic, you can say the same thing, Ms. Buckner.
Well, yes, I guess I conclude the Discipline. Actually, there's nothing that I know of.
No items submitted. Thank you so much, ma'am. Ms. Tilley, policy. Pitcher.
Present seven point zero one, approve the renewal of an application. My screen keeps moving on me. I don't know how to make it work. Of the 2023 G S B A exemplary board status for 2023. And the exemplary board classification requires structure that includes completing, it keeps moving on me. There we go. In accordance with the board, I'm sorry?
Sensitive, so, yeah, it's going to keep moving, yeah.
So it keeps doing it. Sorry, I've never had this problem before. Okay, there we go. The exemplary board classification requires structure that includes completing the board leadership team, self-assessment, linked to, I'm trying to move it, there it goes. And linked to a locally developed adopted, what is that? There we go. There we go. Linked to a locally developed adopted superintendent evaluation instrument, appointed an exemplary committee that conducts an assessment using the same instrument. Combine this, ensures a functionally local organized structure that empowers the leadership team to manage the school district as an exemplary board. The board classification requires board self-assessment, exemplary committee, and annual codes of ethics review. So.
That, it will be on the agenda for us to vote on whether or not we want to pursue the exemplary status award, as well as, and in keeping with that, I will, if you would identify, if you want anyone, a specific stakeholder to serve on the committee, then say so. Send an email. Okay, that would, we'd be glad to participate as a stakeholder. And we should, and we will be prepared, hopefully, next week or next month to do our own self-assessment. Next month, okay. It's that time. So that's, that's what will be before us next week, Ms. Tilley. We will be voting on that. Yes, ma'am.
Application, okay. And then I'm also presenting the board meeting schedule for 2023.
Sync your calendars. If you have a conflict, board, be sure to pay close attention to this. And if we have a conflict where we need to move something around, say you before we vote on this. Well, actually, it sits, does it, this sit? No? No, this does not sit. We will be voting next week. On Tuesday. We'll be voting, our next meeting is Tuesday of next week. We'll be voting on it. So please take, take an opportunity to check your calendar.
And I think that concludes the policy committee.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Chambers, our property committee?
Um, thank you so much.
Item eight point zero one is the museum report, and it is attached. I will not read it to you, but I will say that the museum continue the museum pals at Muskogee County School District Elementary Schools during December, as well as they have a new partnership with Wynton Arts Academy. And there are a list of different programs and the people who attended. And then item, any questions about the museum report? Okay. Item eight point zero two is the library report, and the library report is attached as well. And just want to remind you that just like last year, the library has a winter reading program for children, teens, adults, and school board members. Children need to read thirty books to earn their entry, and adults and teens need fifteen hours for theirs. There are age-specific prizes for each group, and the contest ends on January the thirty-first. You can. It did not specify, but yes, it says prizes. And school board members are encouraged to attend, to participate. And you can use Beanstalk or Beanstack to register, or just fill out a form at your local library. And there are several heart-wrenching stories about the service at the library. We thank our partnership with the library and the museum. It is a jewel in our community. If there are no questions, board members, that concludes the property committee. Did you have a question, Dr. Lewis? Okay. That concludes the property committee. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chambers. Next, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, um, nine, nine point zero one is the personnel report. We have two attachments there, and I'm just gonna go on and ask for an update. I see y'all, well, they're smiling, an update on the, the bus drivers and Ms. Buckner's question, I mean, her question. Her, yes, yes. Right. So we're just gonna get that out there.
Either, either one?
Yes, I was just opening up. So I'm gonna start with the teachers, as that's my first, that's my first Excel spreadsheet. So we have totals. For the special education teachers, total, there are fourteen vacancies. For the special education paras, there's twenty-three vacancies. For the general ed teachers, there are thirty-six point five vacancies, and general ed paras, twenty-five. We have the Division of Student Services, oh, well, you don't need that. And then going to my operations. Special ed was fourteen.
I thought she said fifteen vacancy.
So, hold on, let me, I'm sorry, let me go back to previous. Here we go. I have for special ed teachers, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen vacancies and twenty-three paras.
Heard fifteen.
No, gen ed is thirty-six point five, and paras are twenty-five. Teachers, general ed teachers. Okay, and then going to the. So for special education bus drivers, there's five vacancies. Sub bus drivers, thirteen, and regular ed bus drivers is thirty-four vacancies.
Could you, could you say that one more time, please?
Five special education bus drivers, thirteen sub drivers, and thirty-four bus, regular ed bus drivers. And you had previously requested, and I hope you got a chance to see the three months.
I do.
Is there a way, since this comes up every month, that this could become like part of the monthly reports that are sent out to the board?
Absolutely.
Or at least put it on the front page.
Well, I mean, I would like to see it before, because for me, and, and I'm seeing board members trying to write down what you're saying.
Yes.
I would like to have some time to sort of digest the numbers, so that if there's any questions, I don't come up with them tomorrow after we've left the boardroom.
Absolutely.
You know, if we can just go out, either attach to this, so that when we get the agenda, it's on there, we can all look at it.
Yes. I, I agree.
Yeah.
It's, it's easy to add it. I, my assumption was, is that the previous report that you received is what you expected and wanted, but I can absolutely add this up.
It just comes out, it come up.
Every time.
Every.
You might as well give it to you. It's good, it's there anyway, right?
I have a question.
Okay.
Ms. Chambers. I heard you say we have twenty-three vacancies for para professionals. Are we requiring our para professionals to take some type of exam?
It's funny that you ask that, because what we have right now is we're developing, we have programs to develop our pairs. They don't have to have certifications or anything like that, but they do have to meet certain standards. And we are also trying to groom subs and, and trying to fill our teacher roles. And this is a foundational group that already works with the students. So we have, we actually earned a grant, and that grant is built to specifically train, offer training for developing paras. So we are looking to add more of that, but currently the existing para process is, is not as robust.
Okay, so, so I'm not asking for it to be more robust, because I do understand that a para professional is a assistant to the teacher. The teacher's going to do the teaching. But I was asked why we require our para pros to take an exam in order to be hired. So, but you're telling me that that's not true. We, we don't require that. I had never heard of that before.
I can't say that. I, I do not know to that level, but I can check.
Well, check and, and let me know, because I do, especially if we've received a grant and we can train them. Twenty-three para professionals, having been a, a classroom teacher, I know that you want your para professional in there with you, even if you have to train them yourself, even if it's just to run to the restroom or to help little Johnny who really needs some one-on-one. That is a critical role for teachers that, and to hear that we have twenty-three. I, I just would hate for it to be because there's one test that they didn't pass, and we could be providing help to the teacher. So if you check on that and let me know if we were doing that in the past, and are we gonna continue, or why would we do that? Especially if we have twenty-three needed at this time.
But they do have some criteria.
They, they definitely have criteria. I, I don't know exactly what that is, but one of the things that kept coming up, well, actually, two things that came up was the fact that, that some are looking for more. They clearly have to have certain, let's say they're special education assistant. And so they have to know certain things, like how, you know, how to provide the support to a special education student, how to restrain as, if needed. Those kinds of things are necessary for them. So clearly there are criteria that are established.
And there are criteria for the general ed as well, so.
Absolutely. And the other thing that we're looking at is that in tomorrow, or Wednesday, when we talk at the general ed, I want to share some of the things that we're doing to find substitutes and paras with, and a program, it's called ESS, and they actually have a, they're the ones who maintain the, the, the paras and the substitutes, and we tell them the vacancies and they provide it to us. Now granted, we want to be able to hire them ourselves, retain them ourselves, but it's kind of like the Chance Light situation, is that some people are just better equipped and have a wider foundation or reach and network of people that they can tap into to provide that to us. So we are going to be exploring that over the next couple of weeks and hopes, hope to have a contract where they'll supply us those certified, qualified people and help us to train them and potentially bring them on as teachers for us.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Kind of let us know about Mrs. Chambers' original question. If para, if there is a specific test that para pros have to pass to make them eligible, eligible to be a para pro?
Absolutely. I have that noted, and I'll share that either the next time we speak, or I'll just email it to you.
Next Tuesday, please.
Are there any more questions? Here, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Jackson. All right, Mr. Cantrell, and then Ms. Williams. You got the ball, Mr. Cantrell.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to ten point oh one, update construction. Thank you so much. Good evening. I'm Travis Anderson, Chief Operations Officer. So we are excited to stand before you today to review some important information about our processes. You know, I've been here for fourteen months. Ward Odom has been serving as the interim director of construction for about a year. And during that time, we've been very intentional about improving our process and procedures. And so at the start of this calendar year, we have a new board member, and we also have lots of community interest in our construction projects. So we wanted to share with you what our approval process will be, how we manage our processes going forward. And we really wanted to focus on aligning them with four things, board policy, as well as GADO requirements. We also want to make sure that we're always meeting Georgia purchasing requirements, and then of course, industry best practices. That's difficult to do, and so we've been very intentional to make sure we create a process that meets all those criteria and that really engages our community, our vendors, our local vendors, as you have requested us to, so providing them more opportunities to be successful in the bidding process. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ward, who will review with you our process moving forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll take just a few minutes of time to talk about this, and when I say a few, I'm defining it as three minutes or under, so mark clock, here we go. So our construction project approval process, we start with the standard approval process, going from the preliminary project budget all the way through change orders. That's kind of our line there. We have the preliminary project budget is really based on known industry trends and cost projections and then estimates. So the administration, we build the preliminary project budget. Once we do that, then we have a delivery method. Typically, we use two delivery methods. There's more out there, but it's typically what we do here at the design bid build and the construction management at risk. The design bid build, we recently, our new elementary school, number eight, we use for, the method for that. And then the construction management at risk, the honor of modernization project, we used for that. So it just depends on the needs. Then we move into an architect selection. An architect selection is professional services, board policy to, to pick that. We, we look at the needs of the project and then select an architect based on their portfolio, on what they can do. So we select them, and then we move over to the project budget. Project budget is really where we're refining the preliminary project budget with state procurement bidding processes and getting subs and actually getting bids, so we're actually refining the preliminary to a project budget. Then we move over to the vendor selection, which is the design bid builder, the construction manager at risk, and it depends on whichever delivery method we have, choosing those vendors or basically the subs. We use the state procurement process to get those. Then we move over to change orders. Change orders, it doesn't matter which method we use on the delivery method, change orders happen. Change orders that go over fifty thousand dollars, whether it's due to scope increase or some unknown. If it's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to come back to the board, or if it, you know, affects the actual project budget, we come back to the board for approval. Then some common terminology that we use in this process, we have the construction budget. The construction budget is actually tied into the preliminary budget or the project budget, it's just one piece of it. The contingencies, we have a construction contingency and an owner's contingency. Then guaranteed maximum price, that's part of the construction manager at risk piece. And then upgrades, we use upgrades to define, the GADO process is renovation, modification, or modernization. So anything outside of that, we call upgrades. And that's kind of our, just high-level look at it. There's not reading every bullet point, y'all can read that, but do you have any questions for me on that? Any questions, board?
Yeah, I have a question about the delivery, delivery method. Okay, so in our recent building of new schools, which method have we tended to use most and most of the time?
Most of the time.
Most, all of the time?
Absolutely. Most of the time, we're leaning towards construction manager at risk because of the size of our construction department. The construction manager and the architect work early in the project together to build the best scope, along with us, to build the best scope and the budget for it.
So did I hear you say for the new elementary school, which delivery method that we use?
We did use the design bid build or the hard bid process on that.
Okay, so why did we use that when we tend, why did we use that?
Well, it was built from the ground up on that particular piece. A lot of the times, construction manager at risk is on an existing building that we do an Arnold, and it's modernization, and there's a lot of unknowns. We built the program around the new elementary school, so it was a, the previous administration felt that, that worked out well with us to have enough capacity to design that school with the architect and have enough capacity in-house to work on it. So it was just chosen that way.
Okay, so all of our new schools have been built from ground up. We haven't built around a new school. They've already been, so I'm just trying to figure out why, yeah, why did we choose a bid on that, on that school, Dr. Lewis? What was our rationale for that?
The number of projects that we have going on at the time would determine, you know, also if we have enough help. So if you have a tremendous amount of projects going on, construction manager at risk process would allow the construction company and the architect to work, and takes a.
Because, I, I'm just wondering, because I know, you know, from our former superintendents, they've always said, when you're building a new school, that tend to be the best way. And, and you just said, you get change orders in any delivery system. But it's my understanding that you get less and a better product if you do the construction management. And I was trying to figure out why did we use, why did we use that hard bid process in that? And I just don't remember.
So.
We don't vote for it. I was just wondering how, why, why we chose that.
If you recall, we were going into the pandemic and some of the results of that, and because of that, we want to make sure with the elevated costs that we were not being gouged in some respects. So this is making sure that with the design bid build gives us that opportunity to really make sure we are in check on that, because we did feel like there was going to be some elevated costs on that, but we want to make sure we could monitor those more closely. That's why.
We can monitor the cost more, it seems to me that we can do the cost better with construction management as opposed to. Yeah, I, I don't remember that. I'm just saying, when we, because I remember discussing that with you, and at one time I was telling you my opinion on that before, so I don't remember when we voted on it, but I have expressed that to you prior to any decisions being made, because, because I want to make sure that we were putting all the best effort in, in, in this new school as we have done in other schools. Because I still, you know, now, of course, you've already done this, but, and I will leave here today and forever trying to figure out why we chose this delivery system. So that's neither here nor there, because I still don't understand it.
I'll explain it to you.
Okay, they finished, so what you finished, Travis?
Even though it is an odd month, we are not visiting the slideshow this month in interest of time. Thank you very much.
I've got one question real quick, Travis, and I know y'all probably answered four. Do we have a certain amount of people that bid on this job that are?
Do we have a certain amount of people that bid on this job that are selected through the Board of Directors here or from, you know, the administration cabinet? When we, when we have a school go out there, and I'm learning a lot of this from GSBA, where I, when I go to the meeting up there and I see many, many people that I've never heard of before that build schools and, and we never get, you know, they don't apply or we don't offer it to them compared to the ones that we have that is, you know, it looks like most of our schools are built by the same builder or the same two or three builders out there. And, and can these other places, construction companies give us a bid or do y'all offer a bid or are we just stuck on these people? And I, and I know we voted on this, I think, David, that, that we did vote on a certain amount, but are we losing some people by not allowing the bidding to be stronger where we have different ones? And I don't want to say no names of contractors, but, but that reason? You need to be read.
Thank you. Excellent question. So one of the reasons why Ward and I and as well as the whole entire construction department worked really hard in developing this process is to improve our vendor selection process and to make sure that we are getting a better mix. We've already seen improvement in our vendor response when we put things out for bid. We will see in some of the agenda items you reviewed today for the Arnold School, we had a far more vendor selection, vendor opportunity to work with those vendors and to, who showed up at our meetings and were interested in the project than we have before. So what we're doing now is improving that and we're hopeful that we'll continue to be able to see more vendors in the mix. We do know that we have some really good, talented local companies that continue to bid on our projects and they are very competitive because they're local and because they don't have to necessarily mobilize as an out of town company would do. So we probably will continue to see our local vendors, our local builders having the best bid. But it's not that we're not reaching out to those vendors and that they don't have the opportunity to participate.
Okay, that's a question right there. Oh, here's one more. Our construction people that is working for us mainly, that's the wing, and they're coming through to other companies. Do we keep a track of how much local money is being spent on the school compared to out of town money is being spent by a school? And, yes, ma'am? And I'm talking about as far as, you know, many things. And we, we don't have to go into a long discussion on that tonight, but, but I do wonder, are we keeping Columbus with a, a good lion's share of the, the cash? Because, you know, they're the ones that voted in our splotched. That gives us the chance to have this splotch, these Columbus people in. And I want as much Columbus out there as possible as far as the business. I want any type of business, electrical, water, plumber, anything that we can do. I want it to be Columbus, Georgia first, if it's possible. And not, you know, be at rigging or anything, but have them a chance where our money is staying in Columbus, is being spent by contractors and using Columbus labor. And I know labor is probably harder right now. I know it is for me. It's real hard for construction, but, but I do want it to, I would like it to be as much Columbus money on these schools or as stays in our community. And, and it keeps local people employed. And that's very important to everybody, everybody in the school system here, in the city where we, we take Columbus, Georgia people first, if there's any way.
And, and that's probably best answered through our procurement department, right?
I can answer.
Okay.
Yes. So thank you for that. So again, our purchasing process that we've established for construction does allow for a very wide vendor mix. However, we're not able to ride priority or preference to our local vendors. But because they are local and because we've worked with them before, they do receive, typically, we receive better bids from them because they know what we're working with. They, we have projects from them. And so we find that we often are dealing with local vendors, though they're not getting preferential treatment.
Thank you, Travis.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Mark, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you have these meetings with the vendors, where do you advertise that you're, you know, having this meeting so that vendors can participate?
So our purchasing department advertises, we have the state website, our website, newspaper ads as well. And so we have a fairly extensive mix. Our local vendors are constantly reaching out to us and they're aware. And then the larger companies, typically, they have people on their staff responsible for pulling that, that information. So we have a pretty good mix of people who are actively looking, even if they're not participating in that particular bid process, they are searching out our bids.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, ladies and gentlemen? If not, we move down to 10.02, secure school entrance. Approved two WR as the architectural firm that will evaluate school interest for potential upgrades that will increase the security level of our front entrance of creating a secure visible. The budget impact is $100,000, not to exceed 100,000. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, this was, was this bided out or did we just choose this con?
On this project, the two WR, the architect on this was selected through their portfolio or what they had available to do, we chose them. So it's through professional services, just like we just, just went over just a few minutes ago.
All right, and I have another question. Where it says the, the ones that have not been addressed, so how many schools are, we're looking at right now?
We're approximately looking around, approximately around 34 schools that we're looking at the entrances on.
The entrance level. So with the remaining schools, how, how did that work?
It, it was done through the renovation projects, you know, one school at a time as we was catching them. And it was decided in, in today's environment, we'd go ahead and move forward and try to capture all schools and go ahead and secure the front entrances a little more.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, 10.02, any more questions on that? The next one, contractor Columbus High upgrades. During the April 19th, 21 board meeting, the board approved for the Columbus High Interior and Exterior Upgrades Project to be designed and bid through to Architectural submitted bids. Ben Gordy is being recommended as the construction contractor with low bid of $1,638,000. The company's bidding are as follows, you see down there, there's, it looks like six different businesses, construction. Any questions on that, ladies? Might as well get the gentlemen since I'm it. Moving on to the next 10.04, Columbus High Adjusted Project Budget. During the, this looks like the same one. It's not. During the April 19th board meeting, the board approved initial, 74,3, it's like $2,317,400 project for the Columbus High Interior Exterior Upgrades. Any questions on that one, ladies and gentlemen? Ladies? It's a habit.
The need for the revisions for this particular project?
So this would be an example of the process that we just outlined in which we have the preliminary budget, which is before we have an opportunity to go to bid and then we have the project budget. So this is the project budget. The original budget that is being revised was the preliminary budget. Now that we've had an opportunity to do further work, we're ready for the project budget.
Okay, so, I mean, there is a $2 million difference between the projected and now or 400,000?
The original projected budget for this project back during the April 19th, 21 board meeting was $2,317,000. The project budget came in under the estimated budget at 1.9.
No further questions. Thank you.
The deep, this new budget of 1.9, does that include the technology aspect that was adjusted at some point?
So that was one of the reasons that came up. And we've moved that out and DIS is handling the technology in a, in a different project. So that is one of the reasons.
So how much was the technology component?
I can, I can, I'll send you back that answer. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, can we get that before? Because this looks great. We decreased it by, you know, almost $400,000. But if the technology part was 1.8 million, you know, we kind of need that piece of information.
Okay, we'll send it to you.
So one of the things that, one of the things that we've done to align with best practices from a construction standpoint, our project budgets will focus on construction. The technology piece will be for technology. So this particular board agenda item is about the construction portion of it. And so while it may not be an overall savings, we have to have you vote on the construction budget. So that's a change in our process to make sure it's cleaner and it aligns with what DIS would like for us to do moving forward. And so this is specifically for the construction piece, not the technology piece, but overall.
And that was evident.
Right.
That was evident, but we do, but we called it a savings or decrease or something. We just want to make sure that it is not.
We are not saying that it's a savings. We're just saying that we need to revise the construction portion of the budget. We need to revise the budget. But overall, it is not a savings with what we're spending on Columbus High School.
Okay, so then the, then what we should say then, the difference in the cost is because we moved the technology piece out, right?
And that's what it reads.
I know, I'm just saying in, in our presentation orally is what we should say.
Yes.
Correct.
The appropriate.
Way to handle.
Way to go, you know, put construction and then separate technology into technology. But this was approved when it was combined.
Yes.
And so all I'm saying is in order to get a full picture, because this is not a full picture, we need to know how much of that was technology.
Right. Before we say that, just complete the making it clean process.
You can still, you can put technology in another budget. We just need to know how much of it it was.
Either way, good job.
The way, let me, let me make.
I understand your question.
Okay, you sure?
I understand your question.
The 2.3 million included technology. You're being, we're being asked to approve an adjusted budget downward of 1.9 because we're moving technology away from construction. How much is the technology that we're moving away that we had already approved under 2.3? Thank you.
Does anyone here know? Put your mic up, Ms. Chambers.
We will bring that number back to you.
Okay, sounds good. Because it should be in the, already in the original budget.
It was 650,000.
So we're actually spending a little more than 200,000 on the project when we separate it?
Potentially. If that entire technology amount from the preliminary budget, remember that was still a preliminary budget, if that entire technology amount is needed, potentially we will spend more. Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next one, 10.05, new budgets Hardaway and Kendrick additions. During the December 13th, 21 board meeting, the board approved two WR architectural forms to design and oversee construction at the addition projects at Hardaway and Kendrick. Meskow County School District Construction Department has requested approval of initial project of $4 million each. Budget impact, $8 million not to exceed. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to 10.06, Arnold Middle School Upgrade Projects. During the May 16th, 22 board meeting, the board approved Sudher Patel Architects to design, bid and oversee the Arnold Modernization Project. During the October 24th, 22 board meeting, the board approved River City Construction as the construction manager at risk for the Arnold Project. The architect and construction company have came together to procurement practices. Meskow County School District is requesting the board to approve, but not exceed, 20,785,000, $497.
I'm sorry, Mark. Can we go back just one second to 10.05? I just have one quick question.
Whatever you need. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it says that we have new budgets for Hardaway and Kendrick additions. And it says that they were $4 million each, but there's no attachment to say what those additions are. What are we, what are we paying for at Hardaway and Kendrick? Mine doesn't have an attachment.
So it, it does not. So if you look, this is the initial project budget. So one, and I know we just presented this information to you, so it'll take you a little while to get used to this process, but this is the preliminary budget for this project. So we need you to approve this first so we can then engage the architects to formalize the scope of work and then bring back to you what the specifics will be. So before we can engage the architects, they have to have an idea of how much money they're working with and they will work with our key stakeholders as well as the architects to develop a refined scope of work. And once that refined scope of work is provided, we'll be able to give you a more specific budget for the project. So this is the preliminary budget for it.
But we came up with $8 million for an addition. So we have to know if we're adding a classroom or adding a playground or adding a new cafeteria. What are the additions? What are we adding? What are we trying to do? A new baseball field? I mean, what are we doing at Hardaway and Kendrick that potentially may be $8 million? What are their additions?
It's primarily focusing on the front facade of the buildings, primarily. However, it is up to the key stakeholders to really refine that. So how Kendrick decides what they need and how Hardaway decides what they need will be slightly different, but it's primarily focusing on the front facade of the buildings.
On the inside or the outside?
The entrance.
Okay.
The entrance to the building.
So it's in the splotch?
It's, it's a splotch project, absolutely.
But, but that's not an addition. That's.
That's how it's, that's how it's defined in the splotch, though. And so we're trying to keep with consistent terminology. That's how it's defined in the splotch. Because there, as we look to change the front, specifically Hardaway, as we look to change their front facade, it may actually be that we're adding to the school. Because if you look at how their school is, not a whole lot of landscape there.
Right.
When you walk, and not a whole lot of real estate inside in order to change their facade, so we may have to add to it. Same thing with Kendrick, you know, they have that wonderful awning and entrance, so it may actually be an addition, but it is primarily focusing on the front facade. But to be consistent with what was voted on, we use that same terminology.
Okay, so you all are asking us to approve a preliminary budget for 8 million to, to do something at Hardaway, but we don't exactly know.
This is so we can have, so we can engage the architects and they can work with our key stakeholders to define, define that scope of work. We'll bring that back to you and then you will vote on that. But before we can, before we can start spending money, we have to have you to approve, the, the vendors have to know that we have money approved to spend. So this is, this is the process, this is the, this is the exact process that we outlined for you in our presentation. This is step one for these projects.
Okay. I'll, I'll just call you. Because I, I just would, I don't want it to seem like we're just spending money and we're approving $8 million and no one on this board knows for what.
I know what it's for.
Well, please, please, please explain if you know.
We went out and sold the splotch. One of the things we talked about was Hardaway and Arnold's entrance and the fact that you walked into this, you just walked in and you were like in the classrooms. You were right there. And so we talked about sort of bumping, okay, so bumping out that entrance, right? And adding an addition of vestibule with security and everything, where that kind of goes in. That's what it is.
So I'm having a problem just understanding, and this is just for clarity. I, I, you guys are doing your job, but I like to know what's going on. 10.02 is to secure the school entrances. And to me, to me, that sort of, you know.
And it looks the same in most of the schools, if you would notice, that they now have another layer before you can actually.
I got it even easier than that. I got it easier than that.
Hold on, not board members. I need for this administration to explain to me the difference, just so I can understand. We, we are approving a budget for securing school entrances. Seems like that would be included in Hardaway. But explain to me how this addition is different? And I do understand that before you spend the money, it has to come back to the board. But just for clarity's sake, not, you know, debating that this is the process. But explain to me, how do I know the next time this comes that, you know, there's a difference between these two items?
Excellent question. So one of the questions that a board member asked and Ward answered was how many schools in point two still don't have a security vestibule? He gave an approximate number. That is because there are some schools that even though right now they don't have a security vestibule, they have a project coming up that will include their security vestibule. So for example, Hardaway doesn't currently have a security vestibule, but during their project, they will have a security vestibule. So that won't be included in the overall district, the two, the 10.2 that you were talking about, right? As well as Kendrick, they don't have a security vestibule, but it will be included in their project. Arnold, they don't have a security vestibule, but it will be included. Right, right. Arnold, they don't have a security vestibule, but it will be included, right, right. Yes, exactly. And so, that's the difference. We are, we, what was happening is that the way the security vestibules were being added to schools were when they had another project. What we discovered is that that means that some schools would have to wait a really long time to get a security vestibule.
Absolutely.
And because of what's happened in our society, we felt it was best to pull that project separate. And so, for schools who don't have a specific project, we can work on doing their security vestibules as a part of 10.2. Does that make sense?
And if you look at Kendrick or Hardaway, the way they were constructed back when they were built, a long time ago, you walk right into the building. There may, when we talk, to your point, we want to be very transparent and say, we may have to extend the building out some to make that happen. We might need to add an awning in some areas because back then, they just didn't construct some. So, there are various aspects that might need to be added to in order to facilitate the addition of these security measures or the, or the building itself, the front facade, because we want to give it a different look, update it some from what it is now. So, those are, we consider those to be additions in many respects. So, that's why we call them additions.
Makes sense. Thank you for the clarity.
You're welcome.
Now, I understand.
Awesome.
Okay, and just a quick clarity. On 10.02, too, we're not saying we're automatically spending $100,000. It's up to $100,000. They're billing us per hour, correct? I mean, not by project for the architectural services.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all ready for the next one? Okay. 10.07, roofing contract, Wynton Arts Academy. The construction department requests approval to re-roof Wynton Arts Academy. The budgetary impact will be $834,315. Any question on the new roof at Wynton? If not, we move to the next one. 10.08, Cadet Stadium Scoreboard. $881,000, so they know what construction's coming out.
I could have wanted Otis Spencer, that's it.
And construction status report. I don't need to see it because I just, I just lost it.
It's attached.
Let me ask one question, David, and it probably don't mean nothing, but looking at the, my.
Flag.
Mine is stopped.
Flag.
What about the Jordan High School? They're saying Jordan High School Vocational, then it looks like they're changing the name from Vocational to Jordan, Jordan High College and Career.
That was done alone.
I know that, but I'm looking at it again on this one. And I can't pull it up.
Is Jordan Vocational College or Career Academy?
Okay, what's the, if you read, I can't read mine because it's off the screen now.
Don't worry.
Okay, it stayed the same.
Yeah, it stayed the same.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you, sir.
That concludes Mr. Cantrell's construction report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, that takes us to the Finance Committee. Board members, you don't have many items before you. We'll go to 11.1001. That's Purchase Exception A and B, which is your videotape and textbooks. You have two items before you. Are there any questions?
No.
Hearing none, that takes us to, oops, yeah, 11.02, under Maintenance, Purchase Exception C. You have two items before you for the library system. Are there any questions?
No, ma'am.
Under 11.03, you have one item for the sprinkler system and the backflow preventer services. Any questions? Purchase Exception F, oops, sorry, it went away. I don't know what's the, everybody's is acting up today. You have two items under Purchase Exception F, which is our invitation to bid. These, this is for one roof repair and one furniture. Are there any questions? The rest of the items are your monthly reports. 11.05 is your sole source. They have three items, which is electronic scoreboard, outdoor lockers, and your monthly fuel. Any questions? 11.06 is your monthly purchase order changes. This is for the Woodall program. It's only one item for social worker case. Questions? 11.07, you have one item for the concession stands at Canet and Otis. Any questions under competitively bid? 11.08 is your monthly new budgets. You have one for school nutrition with two items. Any questions on either of those? 11.09 is your budget adjustments. There are, there's one under Division, Teaching and Learning, several areas under your federal grants. And then, under the General Fund, you have one item. Are there any questions on those two items? And 11.10 is your annual, is your, I'm sorry, your monthly financial reports. Are there any questions on that? And I will say that 11.11, which is my favorite, oh, there, it did come up, I'm sorry. It did not come up prior. We have numerous public and private donations. Our monthly total this month is 11, in excess of $11,000. Thank everybody for their generosity and supporting the public education system in Muskogee County. 11.12 is your Audit Committee summary. I am a member of that committee that Lori McCray chairs. And it was a good, I will say it was a good committee meeting as we were able to look at the audit and talk about several property audits. Are there any questions on your summary report? Seeing none, that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. Dr. Lewis, you have, have an answer? Mr. Cantrell, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In response to one of the questions that's asked regarding the paracertification, we have now the information. It's either 60 semester hours or passing the GACE test, and that's a state requirement for, to achieve paracertification, one or the other. The GACE test or 60 semester credit hours of college credit.
And there's a technical program at the local tech, community schools that have that so they can get those hours. All right, so, information only, you know, we're electing officers next week. And we're going to take our new board pictures next week also, Ms. Jones. So, everybody come, come, come on time so we can take our pictures. All right? Anything else? All right, go dogs. We are adjourned.